I'd like to call to you, August the 22nd, 2011, regular meeting of the Frankfurt Board of Commissions to order. And I'd like to have Pastor Carol Jacobs from the House of Refuge Life Center to lead us in prayer for the invocation and then like for everyone to stand and then remain standing for the pledge of allegiance to the flag. Pastor Jacobs.
Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you today thanking you for a group of overseers that still put you first. Lord asks them to be on one accord to bless this meeting as it goes forth for the continuation of our city, for the betterment that we are and we can better serve you. In the name of Jesus we pray. Amen.
I plead the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much Pastor Jacobs. Would the Kirk please call the roll?
Mr. Wilder?
Here.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes?
Mr. Turner?
Here.
Mr. May?
Here.
We're all present, counting four. We've got a good turnout here and welcome to everybody. The first item of business is the approval of our minutes. Now we've had the minute for July 18th, 2011 work session, July 25th, 2011 regular meeting, August 1st, 2011 special meeting, August 8th, 2011 special meeting. We've all had a chance to review the minutes. Do I have any motion? Got a motion?
With one thing.
Yes.
That under August 1st in the special meeting, that under the names that we voted for, for the form-based task force, that Kelly Everman or other member of DFI, since she will be leaving, be added.
Okay. Without objection? Okay, all right. Now do I have a motion for approval of minutes? Commissioner Haddon? You got a second? Commissioner May? Any other comments? All right, call the roll.
Mr. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes?
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. May?
Yes.
Mayor Grant?
Yes, so the minutes are approved. First, next thing we have are ceremonial items. And first of all, want to request that all cell phones be turned off, please. Now ceremonial items, Mr. Goins.
Okay. Chief Wellhort, would you come forward, please, for promotions?
Thank you, Mayor. Board of Questions, Mr. Goins. Last month we, or the Board promoted these individuals effective the first of the month. So they've been on the job 21 days. I think I'm gonna keep them and we'll have a ceremonial penning of their rank insignia. First one is Jeff Abrams. Jeff, would you come up and bring your family with you? Promoted from police captain to major. Jeff is our operations commander, taking over duties that previously were performed by Major Deaton. I'm trying to lighten the load on Major Deaton a little bit, but we'll give it some young blood here. But let's see, where is Major? There he is. Major Deaton still on the call.
And who's going to pin your other...
My daughter, Ally. And I assume Luke will help too, once you guys...
Ally and Luke. You wanna help Luke? All right. You wanna take that? Stick him real hard with it now. Major Abrams been with us for 14 years. Lastly, or lately, he was the shift commander for the night shift. He's been on our tactical team, a fine officer and a great leader in the department. Graduate of the National Academy of FBI. So congratulations.
Thank you, Chief.
Next we have 17-year veteran, Rob Warfel, promoted from lieutenant to captain. Most folks in the community remember Rob from handling the dog. He was our first dog handler when we re-instituted the unit after many years of lying dormant. Ben was the, in fact, Commissioner May was mayor then, was instrumental in making sure that we got that program started again. But...
My daughter said it's her 17th birthday.
Oh, my birthday.
And she's not available for dating you all.
Next is Chuck Adams, promoted from lieutenant to captain. Chuck is a 12-year veteran of the police department. Is Rebecca gonna hand for you? Or what are you gonna have? Chuck's a member of the, actually currently still a member of the tactical response team. And had I known his wife was coming, I should've asked her to sing the National Anthem. She has a beautiful voice and she's signed in for several police functions throughout the state, State Memorial and some of the conventions we've had. Here you go. She's not gonna go anywhere. Yeah. You can go visit. Chuck is a shift commander of the afternoon shift, so we threw him right into the fire. Congratulations. Chuck is also a graduate of the FBI National Academy. Next is, and he's not here, he's on military assignment, Ken Hoppins, promoted from sergeant to lieutenant. I just wanna recognize his promotion and I can tell you just from talking to Ken, he was very proud to make lieutenant and was very happy with it. Very sad that his military duties called him away, but you know, he's a high-ranking enlisted man in his reserve unit and they call him quite often. So we're glad to share with you, or share him with the government. Travis Ellis, promoted from sergeant to police lieutenant, 10-year veteran.
My son.
All right. What's your son's name?
Todd.
Todd?
Todd. T-Y. Like Todd Cobb.
Well, I was gonna say, he plays baseball. I thought you weren't gonna make it because of the baseball.
We're gonna get there as quick as we can.
No good ones, though. You know, I could put this on, generally where it's supposed to belong. There you go. Todd, sorry for messing your neck up. Travis has been a member of our tactical unit for many years and he's gonna take over our field training. So I've got, I've got a lot of work for him to do. And he's, he stays on midnight shift, so.
I am.
So it's breakfast time now. Congratulations. Lynn is a three-year veteran of the police department, has a family here with her, Scott and Taylor and Ryan. All right. Congratulations. Our last one is Derek Napier and he's not here, but we also wanna recognize him. He's one of our dog handlers and now he has an extra job. He's a sergeant, so he's, he's still gonna work the dog and the, his new duties. So thank you very much.
Okay, congratulations to each of you and wish you well.
Mayor.
Commissioner May?
Could I just say something about this group of officers and families? They have, I've watched their, their families grow up. I've seen, I've even been to some of their weddings when they were back in their twenties even, and watched their, their children grow up and it's a proud day for the police department because I don't recall such a dedicated group all at one time coming in, going up the ladder as this group. We've always, we've had great officers and great, great folks in different positions, but this many at one time, these, I can attest to you, I've watched their careers from their first day here and to this point and we're really in, in great shape with these fine men and women. And I could say something nice about each one of them. In fact, Lynn, Sergeant Aubrey was, used to be my personal trainer when she, before she got into the police department and you can tell the difference, she knows how to do it and I've struggled to do it. Lieutenant Ellis, I watched him come in and start from first day on the job and watched him go through the ranks and same thing with all of them. I'm gonna sit here and just kinda get teary-eyed watching him, watching him do it, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop. Their families are great. Thank you all for letting them do what they do and we appreciate the support that you all give them at home. Great bunch of folks. Thank you.
All right, thank you. The, once the people leave, then we're going to rest this and program. Okay, next item on the agenda, citizen comments. And the way we handle citizen comments is that if any citizen can address the commission, but we'd like for you to come to the microphone and then try to hold your comments to within a five-minute timeframe. Do we have any citizen comments to be made? Can you come forth? Identify yourself and then...
My name's Louis McLean. I live, I'm living on Oaklawn Drive here in Frankfurt. Actually, I got some comments and some questions, if I may. First comment, I'd like to say, Chief Wellhort, I read about the, all the activity as far as the drug roundup the other day and I don't know whether it was related or not, but it had tremendous impact on the issues and stuff on the street. Whether it was coincidence or not, I appreciate it. The other thing that I have, question-wise, growing up, I was kinda the kid that asked questions. I was always the kid that was asking why or how things worked and I was fortunate enough to have a dad that was always helping me get those answers. But I continued that throughout my career at the fire department and others. But yeah, I got some, actually some, some comments and some questions. So one of the things is that John Maxwell made a statement one time, said you can never separate a leader's actions from, from his character. And basically every time, E. Stanley Jones made the comment of every time that you refuse to face up to life and its problems, you weaken your character. That being said, and I know that my questions, they vary somewhat, but one of the things that, that we've, I know the new members of the commission basically ran on the open government platform of transparency and I appreciate that, but my questions to the commission for the most part are, these department heads back here and the city solicitor, do we consider those employees of the city? If so, my, my other question is that have any of you, any members of the commission, have you ever cursed at them, implied or threatened them with termination either one-on-one or behind closed doors?
I don't think we can discuss the contents of closed-door meetings. I mean, sometimes we go into closed doors to discuss personnel pursuant to KRS and that's specifically in order to protect the reputations of the individuals we're discussing and we're, we're limited to confidentiality as, as far as those discussions go.
This, we have a time, you know, like five minutes, so perhaps if you'd like to make your presentations and then if the commission like to respond to them, at this time we can give them a little opportunity to respond.
Okay, so let me, let me ask another question now.
Okay.
Would you allow these department heads and the city solicitor, would you allow them to do their jobs without fear or threat or termination, should a member of this commission be found in violation of a city ordinance, procedure or policy?
Obviously, yeah.
Okay. Then I'll move on to another, another problem. Another problem is, is that I recently did an open records request and if I'm doing that, would you prefer that I read directly from my request? I asked for basically a business license and disclosure for anyone that, and I'll ask you again, are any of the members of the, of the commission, have any of you ever basically conducted business or related business activities in Frankfurt without a business license or applicable permit?
I've always had a license with my business.
Yeah. I'm not familiar with my business. I'm sure they do, or I'm not sure if we've done business in the city or the county for a long time.
Okay. Yeah. Okay. I have, I produce a film and have sold copies in town without a, without a business license. I don't, I don't know if I need one or not to do that, but I might be in violation of that.
Okay, so I guess where I'm coming from is that, and I remember a statement that was made election night, that you've been elected, now that's your responsibility to govern. I would think that before you impose anything else on the citizens of Frankfurt, that we try to get our own house in order. I'll, I don't know what my time of things is, but I'll let, I'll let it rest at that. But if that be the case, then my question to you would be, how do you plan to resolve, make restitution, disclose and apply for applicable permits for that particular deal and any future activities?
I mean, I'm, I'll, I guess I can only speak for myself.
Okay. Five minutes is better, if you want to...
I'd like to make a comment if, if I could. For, and I know the members of the commission up here, we each fill a financial disclosure out every year for the Board of Ethics. The Board of Ethics then, then reviews that financial disclosure and determines, you know, if there's, lets us know if there's any conflicts of interest, if they have any issues with that. I served on the Board of Ethics, so I know the process pretty well, as I recall. With regards to your questions about me or about in general the commission, I think that if there was, if I was in violation of the city code and I was cited for it, I certainly would, would carry out my end of the bargain and pay the fine. And with regards to my business, if it has a license or proper permit for the city, I'm not sure that's not my area in the office to fulfill. I'm an operations person and so I don't know if, if they do or not, but they have done business in the, in Franklin County for quite some time, so I just thought I would clear that out on the record.
Okay, Commissioner Wilder?
I can, I can tell you that I haven't done any business in the city that wasn't included in my financial disclosure statement and that I haven't, as you know, serving on the Ethics Board and that I haven't contributed to the Ethics Board.
Yeah, this was an entourage, this didn't have anything to do with the board.
Fair enough. But if there's, yeah, I mean, I'll say the same thing, if there's, you know, if I have any, if I failed to file any paperwork or if there's anything improper about the, the business I've done, I've been very upfront about the business I've done with the movie and we advertise it on, you know, on television and publicize it rather broadly, so if it's something I've hid, but if there's anything out of place there, then I'll, I'll do whatever it takes to, to correct it.
All right.
And I have all records of my business as well, when I'm in.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Any other citizen comments? Okay, so none, then we'll move on to our ordinances. Mr. Moore?
Ordinance 4.1 by title and ordinance to amend the City of Frankfurt's Code of Ordnances, Chapter 152, by amending the City of Frankfurt's zoning regulations, Article 9, flood damage prevention ordinance, Section 9.4.2, duties and responsibilities of the local administrator and Section 9.7, definitions of the City of Frankfurt's zoning ordinance. Summary, this ordinance amends the city's zoning ordinance, Article 9, flood damage prevention ordinance, Section 9.4.2, duties and responsibilities of the local administrator and Section 9.7, definitions of the City of Frankfurt zoning ordinance as requested by the Division of Water.
Okay, do I have a motion regarding ordinance 4.1?
For approval.
There are most approvals, Commissioner May, the second from Commissioner Turner, in discussion. Call the roll.
Mr. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes?
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. May?
Yes.
Mayor Grant?
Yes, so ordinance 4.1 is approved.
Ordinance 4.2 by title and ordinance amending the City of Frankfurt's Code of Ordnances, Chapter 151, by amending Part 9, street naming, closing and site addressing procedures, subsections 9.02.01, 9.03.01, 9.04.01, 9.05.01 and 9.06.01 of the City of Frankfurt's subdivision and development plan regulations. This ordinance amends the subdivision and development plan regulations, Chapter 151 of the Code of Ordnances, by specifically amending Part 9, street naming, closing and site addressing procedures of said ordinances.
Okay, do I have a motion regarding 4.2? Commissioner May, for adoption, do I have a second? Commissioner Haddon, in discussion? Okay, please call the roll.
Mr. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes?
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. May?
Yes.
Mayor Grant?
Yes, so ordinance 4.2 is approved.
Ordinance 4.3, this requires a public hearing.
Yes, sir. So, would you take that right now? Okay. I would, this one is a public hearing, which we're now open for public hearing, pertaining to an ordinance fixing the rate of taxation for the year 2011 on all taxable property subject to tax, trust and insurance companies, public service companies and levying said tax for all city purposes. So any one here that would like to come before the commission and address some comments regarding this?
Mayor, do you want me to read that by title and summary?
Okay, you do that, all right.
By title and ordinance fixing the rate of taxation for the year 2011 on all tangible property subject to tax, trust and insurance companies, public service companies and levying said tax for all city purposes. Summary, that the 2011 City of Frankfurt ad valorem tax rate is 21 and 3 tenths cents on each $100 valuation of all real and personal property, 21 and 3 tenths cents on each $100 valuation on public utilities and public service companies taxable on a franchise basis, 15 and no tenth cents on each $100 valuation on taxable capital of insurance companies.
Okay, any citizen like to address the commission regarding this? Okay, seeing none, then I'll, I'll close the hearing, public hearing. And without objection, we will accept the first reading.
Okay. Yes, sir. Okay. Then ordinance 4.4 by title and ordinance fixing the rate of taxation for the year 2012 on all motor vehicles and levying said tax for all city purposes. Summary, this ordinance fixes the rate of taxation for the year 2011, excuse me, for the year 2012 at the sum of 22 and 7 tenths cents on each $100 valuation on all motor vehicles subject to taxation in the city.
Okay, without objection, we accept the first reading, 4.4.
And then 4.5, an ordinance amending ordinance number six, 2011 series appropriating the revenue to be received by the City of Frankfurt for the fiscal year 2011, 2012. Summary, this ordinance amends the City of Frankfurt budget for fiscal year 2011, 2012 to include a 2% COLA for all city employees effective January 3, 2012.
Okay, without objection, we have to accept the first reading.
And then number 4.6, an ordinance by title and ordinance amending Frankfurt Code of Ordnances, Chapter 32, Section 32.03, meetings. Summary, this ordinance provides that as of October 1, 2011, the Board of Commissioners will meet in work sessions on the second and third Mondays of each month and meet in a voting meeting on the fourth Monday of each month, with all meetings to begin at 5:00 PM.
Commissioner Haddon?
I was under the impression that we were gonna do the second meeting, they had a work session, with the third Monday being optional?
Well, I think I can respond to that.
See, you, you were thinking it's gonna be optional, if you stand?
That the third Monday would be an optional meeting, with the fourth one being, the fourth Monday being the voting meeting.
Yes, okay, all right. Commissioner Wilder?
I think, I think that's, that's actually the way this is, this is set up. As in, when we had, when we've had optional meetings in, in the past, in previous commissions, then all the meetings are set as regular meetings and one of them is just regularly set aside or canceled. You can't, I don't know if you can, I don't know if we could in ordinance set one as a, as an optional meeting per se. That's just something that we, we choose to do with the regularly set meetings.
I just thought it'd be easier versus trying to cancel one, if we had to cancel one, to avoid the cancellation that if it was just written.
Commissioner, I mean, Mr. Moore?
Commissioner Haddon, the one, I think, benefit to having it scheduled in advance in the ordinance is then you can, it's not treated as, as a special meeting and you can discuss issues that might arise during the meeting. You know, whereas as you know, in a special meeting, sometimes it's cumbersome, something will come up at the last minute that the commission would like to discuss, but you're precluded from doing so by statute. So I think that's one of the reasons why in the past the commission has done it this way.
Okay.
Are you comfortable with that? Okay. Comfortable with that? Okay. With that, yes, Mr. Haddon?
The last thing I wanna throw out is I, I've talked to the, all the department heads as well and I do know personally and I think through some of the staff as well, that it's been a lot of stress meeting every Monday at 5:00. Some department heads and myself have to hire babysitters in order to cover, to, to be here, so I'm just gonna ask if that of our third meeting could continue to be at
The, you mean the second work session?
The second one, the third Monday would continue to be at 12:30.
Oh, all right. You agree with that?
Yeah.
Commissioner May, do you wanna come in, like, Commissioner?
Sure. That's, that's perfectly fine with me, although if, that, that doesn't substantively change what we currently have, that just takes out one of the, one of the work sessions, the first Monday work session.
Right.
And it, it really is pretty easy to, to cancel... And it, it really is pretty easy to cancel the optional meeting. In fact, it's just, from our perspective, it's automatic unless, unless the mayor or majority of the board requests that it, that it go back on. So, it isn't, we don't have to take any action to cancel the meetings, they just, they're just kind of automatically shelved until, I mean, they, they have to be, Ramona has, we don't have to take action to cancel them.
You need to agree on a work session to cancel them.
Okay. But it's pretty-
On the record.
Sure. But I mean, we don't have to come in and sign, we don't have to come in and sign stuff or anything like that. If, and I think it's a good idea to keep the third one at 12:30, because that also eliminates Commissioner Turner's pushboard conflict. Although, all things being equal, if we're going to do that, then I would, I guess I'd suggest that we actually keep, keep the ordinance we have, and just, and just regularly cancel the first Monday and third Monday, and that just gives us still, if we, if we need to have a meeting on that first Monday for some reason, that still gives us the option without having to call a special meeting, because if we, as we've, as we've experienced this term so far, calling a special meeting can be, can be quite a process, and it causes a particular strain on Ramona when she has to stay after work to collect signatures or this or that. So, we can, we can actually limit our work sessions to one a month with one voting meeting a month, and we, and then just, we could even start, starting this month, or starting next month, go ahead and just start canceling the first and third meetings until or unless we ever feel they're needed. But that way, if something comes up after a voting meeting, sometimes there's, sometimes there's two weeks before the, sometimes there's that extra week at the end of the voting meeting, so that gives us the, the opportunity, if something comes up that we want to discuss within two weeks, to do it. I don't, every now and then, as we, as we experience with the humane society with any number of other subjects, every now and then, stuff just comes up.
Right.
Okay, now, we, we have, the first reading is stated in our book, or if you want to just change that, we'll do this at this time.
Can I ask a question? If we were to change that 12, and I think I can anticipate the answer, but if we were to change that from the third Monday being at, what, to 12:30, would we have to do another first reading?
I think that's a substantive change.
Okay.
And that's, you know, that's certainly not a problem.
Just a matter of when we, we start a month later, right?
Yes, sir.
I've got plans.
Well, that's-
No, no, whatever.
Well, that's kind of the, that's kind of the point I'm making, making, Mayor, and President of the Commission, we can, we cannot make any changes at all to the ordinance, and start, if, if we were to hold another first reading, this would take another, this would, this would add more time to these changes.
Right.
But if we were to not make any changes, and have four meetings a month ordained, and just choose to eliminate the first and third, then we can go ahead and start that this month, and, and not have to pass a, go through the trouble of passing and drafting a new ordinance. We can just, we can just start doing that. I mean, I really, I really appreciate Commissioner Hadden suggesting that we, that we whittle down to two meetings a month, and I completely agree, but I'm just pointing out, this isn't the, this isn't the only way to do it, we can, we can actually just choose to do it.
Okay, as I, as I read this whole situation, we can, by accepting this first reading of the present one, that we can, we have the option on the second work session whether or not, what time we want to meet, is that correct?
No. If, if you accept this as the first reading, but we change the third meeting to start at 12:30 PM, then we would need to have a new first reading, which I assume would be in the September meeting, and then the second reading would be in the October meeting, unless there are special meetings in between.
Commissioner May?
I guess it's a point of order. We could do both things here, to make, if, if there's a desire to go ahead and change the ordinance to where it's three, we can do the, a new first reading at our next meeting, and as Commissioner Wilder suggested, we could all agree to suspend or cancel the first and third meetings in September, and keep the second and fourth meetings at September, and still come back and do the ordinance if there's a desire to do that, if, so it can accomplish, at least for September, everybody can be happy.
Okay, Commissioner Wilder?
I think we all, I think we all agree that we want to get down to two meetings a month, to the, to a work session on the second Monday of the month, and a voting meeting on the fourth Monday of the month. I think that's, and that's unanimous. We also agree that it would be good to keep at least one of those work sessions on the table, in case we need to discuss anything without having to go through the, the process of calling a special meeting. And I think there's a number of problems with calling special meetings, including the restricted agenda that special meetings have, plus the headaches we run into calling special meetings this, this year already. And so, it seems that we can accomplish both of those things simply by not doing anything, as in, we can scrap the ordinance, cancel our first and third meetings regularly, but still have those options available to us if anything does come up, and we do need to, to deal with anything. So, we can avoid, we can avoid having to call any special meetings, and limit our meetings, and, and go down to two meetings a month without passing a new ordinance. All things being equal, I guess that's really what I would prefer, but I'll, I'll go along with the will of the commission.
Well, I'll just, if I may, Mayor-
Yes, sir, please interject this.
-add my two cents into this. I agree with Commissioner Wilder to an extent that we could do that, and that would be, we could essentially cancel them all. I don't know how, I don't know how disciplined this commission would be in doing that, because, you know, we do get, you know, there's always an issue, or always something that we can, we can discuss. I kind of like the framework of having it in, set by ordinance, and I still think that that third optional work session gives us the flexibility to be able to pick up that issue, or an issue, if we need to. I know it may leave a gap that first week of the month, but if need be, if there's this, if the humane society comes up, we could word a special meeting in a way that we could facilitate more discussion on that topic. But this would protect that, that you would only have at max three regular meetings per month, and I do kind of like that protection in that ordinance.
Okay, so you, of what you found, what you want to prove this, or come back with this first reading, at stating at different time?
If it were up to me, I, you know, of course, it's the will, what really matters is the will of the board, but if it were up to me, we would put that third Monday at 12:30, and then make that one correction to the draft ordinance, and then, you know.
So, then we'd have another, if we do that, we state 12:30, then we have to have a new-
I think, out of the ordinance of caution, we should-
Then we'll, we just want to accept this as the first reading, and come back next month with first reading, stating that 12:30 for the, the third meeting. Okay. Yes, sir, Commissioner May?
And I will, did we decide that we would cancel the first and third meetings in September? Hint, hint.
The first one is a holiday. First one's a holiday, sorry.
So, I'm saying, just, we said, well, we have to say that we're going to cancel the third. Let's go ahead and say we're going to cancel the first one. And the third one? Okay, she canceled it one week out.
Yeah, that's probably good.
We have another ordinance, which, which we state 12:30 on the, on the third Monday.
Okay. And then for Ramona's records, is the first meeting in September is canceled then? Because that's a holiday.
Right.
Okay.
The third meeting is not.
Pardon?
The third meeting is not.
Which is a question about the third meeting? The, the third meeting in September?
Is not a holiday.
I think that the question is, do we want to go ahead and cancel that third meeting? I think it'd probably be, and what Commissioner Wilder alluded to, it'd probably be smarter to do that just a week out. That way, if there is an issue that pops up that needs to be discussed, we can still retain that right to have that meeting without going ahead and canceling it.
All right, that takes care of the, now, we're on to orders. Mr. Moore?
Yes, Mayor, Order 5.1 is an order to amend and update the City of Frankfurt Transit System Drug and Alcohol Policy to include the recent amendments to the Federal Transit Administration Drug and Alcohol Rule.
All right, we entertain a motion pertaining to Order 5.1. Do you have a motion for approval? Okay, Commissioner May, got a second? Mr. Hadden, in discussion? Call and roll.
Mr. Wilder?
Yes.
Commissioner Hadden? Yes? Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. May?
Yes.
Mayor Grant?
Yes, so Order 5.1 is adopted. Now, we're down to resolutions, Mr. Moore.
Resolution 6.1 is a resolution of the City of Frankfurt, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Kentucky Office of Homeland Security for the law enforcement protection program to execute any documents which are deemed necessary by K O H S to facilitate this project, and to act as the authorized correspondent for this project. And this particular resolution is for safety vests and other related items.
Do I have a motion for approval of Resolution 6.1? Commissioner May is second, but Commissioner Hadden, in discussion? Call and roll.
Mr. Wilder?
Yes.
Commissioner Hadden? Yes? Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. May?
Yes.
Mayor Grant?
Yes, Resolution 6.1 is adopted.
Resolution 6.2, a resolution to support CACDA's preparation of an economic development plan for downtown Frankfurt. Also, the city will share in the preparation cost.
Do I have a motion for approval of Resolution 6.2? Commissioner Wilder?
We were, I, I should check this, does this resolution reflect the-
Give me a motion, give me a discussion, okay?
I'm not, I'm not sure which resolution this is.
This is 6.2.
No, I understand that.
Okay.
There are two drafts that have been on the table, I'm not sure. Okay, so moved.
Okay, you do have a second, then we discuss it, we take it off. Do you have a second? It's the second, Mr. May. Okay, in discussion, now, Mr. Wilder?
Oh, no, I just wanted to, there have been a couple of drafts of the resolution that have been discussed, I just wanted to make sure, but this, this is the, yeah, this is the one that I'm, I'm up for.
Any other discussion?
The change just came today in the resolution?
It, it-
That was email received from CACDA, it's to alternate language, said you need to decide.
I can speak to the substance of the change, if you'd like.
Because you were part of the meeting?
Yes, the mayor and I were present at the KCDC, or CACDA, board meeting, where, where their board discussed these changes, and then these are the changes they submitted to us. The only, there are really only two, two significant changes. One is that CACDA is referenced as the Capital Community Economic and Industrial Development Authority, doing business as the Kentucky Capital Development Corporation, as opposed to simply using the acronym. And the other, and this is, the other change, has agreed to formulate and submit for consideration proposals for economic development in downtown Frankfurt, and to collaborate with other stakeholders and the citizens of Frankfurt in developing and preparing an economic development plan, as opposed to simply putting together a plan. They're going to work up some proposals, and, and then those, those can be the, and then have a community-wide discussion when it comes to putting together a broader plan.
So, other stakeholders and citizens shouldn't put together proposals as well?
Oh, no, it would be-
KCDC just-
I guess, I guess I can, I can speak to that as well, I, and this is just my opinion.
We have, the chairman of the CACDA board here, would you be prepared, if we want to ask some questions, be ready to pass up there, okay?
Sure. I think my, I think to put together any, any plan that includes input from stakeholders, citizens, and other organizations, then they would, they would certainly be responsible for, for coming up with proposals as well. But my, the way, the way it was worded before, I think, and I, and I think maybe Libby should, should speak to this, because I don't want to speak, I don't want to speak for them, but my understanding is that the way it was worded before would have made it difficult to even get any, any of their concepts on paper, and brought to the table with other cons, you know, with other concepts from other people.
If they're all meeting at a table, I don't know why it would be hard for them to not be able to present their information.
Well, exactly, but that's, no, exactly, but that's the thing.
Mr. Marshall, you please come up. Libby Marshall, who's the chair of the CACDA board.
Thank you, Mayor. And I appreciate your questions, Commissioner Hadden. This is what we discussed at the Thursday meeting. It's clear that there is interest in a comprehensive, community-wide plan for the downtown area. However, two of the organizations that might participate in that planning and perhaps offer some leadership, both KCDC and downtown Frankfurt, are in a state of flux, so that comprehensive plan probably would not take off immediately. We have a nationally recognized master planner on our staff at this point in time, who could give us some ideas that have been fermenting in his tenure here in Frankfurt, which he would like to do. We also have ideas coming up from KCDC board members. We could get all of that together fairly quickly before Mr. Thar leaves, and have that available to plug into that comprehensive plan when you decide that the time is right to do that. So, our thinking was, we would call this a series of proposals rather than a plan, so that it would not imply to anyone that we're trying to preempt a collaborative, comprehensive plan as you envision at some point in time. We're just taking a slice at some proposals now, because the timing requires us to do that now, rather than wait until a, a better time for all of these organizations to work toward that bigger plan. Does that make sense?
Yes, it makes sense. But he's been on staff for how many months, and how many of his plans are already written down here?
Well, he's been on staff for 10 months. He has a number of ideas that, this, this has actually been one of the things that he wanted to do, and so he has a number of ideas, and he plans to have a draft to our board fairly quickly, at least we'll begin looking at this by our next meeting. This, you know, I, I think what we hope is that this will be, this will just seed the process, and, and gather those ideas while we have the opportunity.
Could, would Commissioner- I can make an example that I think can maybe clear a little bit of this up. At the, at the KCDC board meeting on Thursday, it was very clear that the board has every intention of collaborating, and it looks forward to the collaborative process, and I guess what I, what I picture is, is a point when DFIs are longer in flux, and they're a little more settled, and all the, all the boards and entities are ready for it, that we have a table, and that all these entities come to the table with their ideas, you know, with their ideas and proposal, and we start to, you know, a comprehensive plan starts to get fleshed out, and this is simply a green light for KCDC to go ahead and get their ideas together. But I, I think they've, they felt like they needed some kind of direction from us in that regard, before they could even, even take that, that small step. Is that fair?
Yes, I think that, that accurately describes it. We, we, we are not going to try at this point to lead a collaborative, comprehensive process, that's your decision at the time you want to do that, and I think that there will be a, a time soon, that that would be opportune, and you may want to do that in any kind of, any structure that you choose to do. Any structure that you choose to do, but we just want to gather these ideas while we can, from both board members and from our executive director.
As I recall, it's been part of the conversation. There was a handout, and this page here was the front page of the handout, which states that the downtown Frankfort benchmark plan, and then there's something like about 10 little areas of issues that would be addressed. Then the second page, it might have been three pages, I'm sure, but had a listing of trying to identify what is a master plan and things of this nature. And the part of the conversation that I wanted to make sure I understood was that there be a clear understanding about what a benchmark plan was and a master plan, so that regardless of what it's titled, if we understand what's going to be happening here. And so it's... I think we all realize that... I don't know, I can't speak for everybody, but to me, I think we do need some type of a strategic plan, and so this will be the first step of a strategic plan. But it's also emphasized strongly that the people like downtown Frankfort and tourism and Chamber of Commerce and what have you, as they proceed with this, would be involved. Now, as I understood it, Mr. Tharp would put down Mr. Brogge's some ideas, and certainly not locking us into anything.
That's right.
And that it'd be his ideas, and then, as I don't know if this was automized or not, but at least I hope it would be true, was that after he puts this on paper, then the CACADA board itself would be discussing this and either give their, you know, approval or what have you, or their blessing, and then it would be come back and we'd all know what that is. Then, at that point, somewhere along that line, then you'd start bringing in the various groups that we've mentioned here and others in the community to look at what has been put on paper and see how that fits with what the general cities would have to do, and some of it could be discarded. Is that not right?
That's right.
And are kept or what have you. But it would be the first step to get the initiative process going.
Yes.
And then I would... Then it would come back, but you could see it.
Yes. You... I think you have outlined that exactly right, that this would be a... This would be the product of the KCDC board, CACADA board. It would include some ideas that you know have been fermenting within the good minds of some of the board members who've been thinking about these things for a long time, as well as Mr. Tharp. At the point that you decide that you're ready to start on a comprehensive plan for the downtown area, you may want to use another structure, a community task force. I believe Dave Weller suggested that at the last meeting that we discussed this. But whatever you choose, these are ideas that would be filed there. We would have not allowed those to get away from us, and they would be there for the use of that group at whatever time you choose to convene that group for the next phase of a plan.
Commissioner Wilder?
I can tack on one more thought that might help alleviate some of Commissioner Hayden's concerns. I frankly don't think that we need to, direct or in the form of a resolution, direct DFI and tourism to go ahead and start thinking about their proposals for economic development downtown, because I... Because I think they're probably doing that already anyway. But if it would just help make all things equal, I'd be perfectly happy to put... To swap some names out and to get resolutions to that effect on next month's ballot as well.
And I might share with you that I have talked with all of those folks to let them know what we're trying to accomplish right now, which is just cataloging these ideas and getting them on paper while we have the opportunity to do so, and that this in no way preempts the bigger collaborative process. But we don't, at the same time, want to lose opportunities because we've got to convene a lot of people in a collaborative process. That will come, and that is necessary, and we recognize that. We're just trying to be efficient right now, because it's necessary to do so.
There's one other question that I wanted to raise, is that any of it's set into... To share the cost of the preparation of the economic development proposal for downtown Frankfort. What do we... Is there any... But just putting things on paper, ideas, that doesn't seem to be much of a cost, or any... Is there any cost involved in that?
What we have estimated the cost to be, to be between $1,000 and $2,000, which would be for mapping downtown and doing some of the overlays to show you where certain things might take place, and we, of course, will absorb that cost.
So this proposal would say that if it costs $1,000, you want the city to submit portions of that, or...
Mayor, our board did not actually act on a budget allocation for this, but there was discussion of that, and because it was... Mr. Tharp is not charging it for his time, that he's doing this under his current salary agreement, we think that this is a cost that the KCDC board would absorb, up to $2,000 certainly.
If you don't mind, you have... You know how I sometimes have difficulty understanding?
Yes, I'm sorry. We're...
You said he is doing this...
Under his current salary arrangement, so there's no consultation fee?
So there's no additional salaries? It's just for the copying or whatever?
It would be for the graphics of laying this out for you if...
Okay. I just want to make sure of the clarity on that.
If it's part of this job, why do we need to approve for him to do this? Are we just trying to approve for you guys to lead this, to plant the seed so other people can come aboard?
I can speculate on that, but it's... I think some of the background on this is that there was... We had the joint meeting between the city and the county and the KCDC board back in April, and the concept of doing an economic development plan was brought up in that meeting. And the KCDC board, and a majority of us expressed support for it, but the KCDC board felt that that support wasn't expressed formally enough for them to feel comfortable moving forward on something that was outside of the way they've normally done things, because they've normally focused on industrial development and on industrial recruitment in the county, and this being a little different from the way they'd normally done things, and then being a joint organization jointly funded by the city and the county. I think they felt like, you know, this isn't a big project and it isn't heavy lifting per se. They just... They felt like they needed to hear a little more formally from us in order to feel comfortable moving forward on it. Is that fair?
I think that's where I said. We have not addressed our activities to the downtown area in the past, so there has certainly been discussion that it's one of the more important commercial and economic areas of the whole community. But we appreciate having this charge. We think that it just gives the board a sense of comfort in having the authority to do this. It is within our general responsibilities to do economic development planning, so we're just moving it to the downtown area, which has not been within our previous area of responsibility.
Okay.
Actually, you probably... I mean, this is a comment. The board could have taken this upon itself without having a proposal.
I think so.
As part of the assumption that it is your role. Is that not fair?
I think that that's correct, but it is truly outside of what we have done in the past. We have concentrated almost exclusively on the industrial park.
And so you prefer for having one of the resolution was simply some... Maybe some symbolic symbolism that we are trying to issue some things downtown likewise.
That's right, that one of our funding partners has said this is important to us, and we're asking that you go forward with this.
And in a nutshell, my sense of what we're approving and what this resolution says, it's simply us recognizing that downtown is important to economic development, as opposed to just the industrial park. And it's just giving our economic development authority the green light or the comfort to really, in terms of putting together proposals, just to think about it and to kind of include it in their thoughts. As Libby said, anything that comes out of... Any proposals that are put together would be absolutely non-binding. And I guess the way I see this is that at some point, hopefully, DFI and tourism and KCDC and property owners and citizens will come together with an abundance of ideas and proposals for downtown. And this merely gives... In terms of how they're spending their time right now, this merely gives KCDC a green light and the comfort to just start thinking about the ideas they want to bring to that table.
Okay. Mr. Turner?
As I've voiced before, I am in support of the plan and think it'll be good for the downtown area. I do have one issue here with the wording, and obviously it's something that I can get over because I'm prepared to vote for the resolution as it is, but I wanted to point it out, and the mayor started down this road, and it says, "And to share the cost of the preparation of the economic development proposal for downtown Frankfort." I'm glad to hear that the board has leaned in the direction of wanting to assume that cost. It is my hope that they take formal action to assume that cost. If need be, if the city has to, you know, give money to do that, $1,000 or $2,000, that's certainly something that this commission will look at. But the commission does give quite a bit of money every year to CACADA and KCDC, and I can't speak for the rest of commissioners, but I know it's my wish that that would be enough money to accomplish those goals, because this is a priority for the city in economic development, and that's what that money is sent to KCDC for. So, thank you, Libby, for all of your help.
Okay, Commissioner Hayden?
And Libby, I want to thank you two for coming and helping answer some questions. And I don't doubt that... I don't believe that economic development really needs to happen in downtown Frankfort and within our city, but I just do have concerns. I feel like I saw this in February. We had a joint meeting in April, and now here we are again saying, "Please, will you give us an economic development plan to at least start looking at downtown Frankfort?" So thank you for answering my questions. I personally like the other resolution better, but again, as long as all stakeholders are involved, and if this is what it takes in order to get your board to plant the seed, please plant it.
We'd be happy to.
Okay, now we... Commissioner May?
Sorry to drag it out. As I say, if there's concern about the way the resolution is drafted, proposed, and the majority of the commission is worried about the cost, as Commissioner Turner said, I know that the commission and the fiscal court charge the economic development authority with doing this type of work, and that's what we give the annual contributions to. So if there's a majority that want, and I can go either way, if it makes people feel better to strike the sentence that talks about sharing in the local cost, because it sounds like Ms. Marshall's already saying that the board's... Their economic development board would cover that cost. We can strike that if that makes people feel better.
Commissioner Wilder, you want to come in?
I guess I'd prefer to keep that in. I mean, what I'm hearing is that they're prepared to shoulder that cost for the most part, but, I mean, if anything, my understanding also is this isn't actually budgeted for you. I mean, if... This is just such a priority, I really want to see this happen. And if that requires us to put up $500, $1,000 for the printing costs and the materials, that I think would be... I think the materials that are produced, especially in terms of good maps showing what is available downtown, frankly, I'd... If that's what it takes to get this to happen, I'd just as soon keep it in there and then trust that you all understand that your board and our board are all hurting for money. So I'd say everybody's going to try and do this as cost-effective as possible.
Commissioner May?
Yeah, the other thing I would just add, too, is I think when I was one of the three original votes to form the economic development authority years back, I think all of us that voted for that formation of this board, economic development authority board, was that this would include not just industrial development, but economic development plans, and that's why we worded it at the time in that way. I think the problem is, over the years, and I saw this while I was mayor, some of the agencies don't want to... Some agencies just don't cooperate as well as they should, I think, and they get involved in turf battles, and I think, just, you know, putting it right out there, our community would be much better if all the agencies involved would cooperate and be willing to work in a way that will be productive for the entire community. And I just feel like economic development authority should be the spearhead for this type of effort, and I know that they will work with all the entities that want to be involved, and that's the only way it's going to work, because if a plan came back to the city and didn't include everybody, we certainly probably wouldn't accept that. And secondly, I think the reason the economic development board is asking for this is because they have had these problems in the past with folks with other boards and agencies that do get city funding, by the way, have not wanted to give up what they thought was their turf. And frankly, I don't see some of the agencies that have complained being their charge being economic development. Certainly, that would be part of it, but they need to focus on what their main charge is and work... Everybody work together in their areas of expertise, and that will make for a much better plan and make the community prosper in a much better way. And I think that's... This is just the first step in trying to get that movement happening. And if people don't cooperate again, then all they're really doing is sort of cutting the nose off to spite their face. So I would hope that all agencies would cooperate and certainly not worry about who's taking the lead on this particular instance, because the other agencies and boards that would be asked to participate certainly have their areas of expertise, and I can't see... For example, economic development authority wanted to tell tourism how to develop a tourism plan, or the Chamber of Commerce how to develop business development plans or programs. I think that's probably why economic development authority came to us and said, "Would you do this?" I haven't had any private conversation with anybody, because I'm just kind of thinking that's where this is coming from.
That certainly does help with our sense of confidence in doing this.
And I hope I didn't offend anybody by...
Sense of confidence.
But I probably did.
Okay, now try to move this and get some finality to this. We have really before us, if you don't... We have before us really two resolutions, one that we had in your book that we presented to them, to the Economic Industrial Board, then the one they received today. So we've got to make sure... So, we've got to make sure when we take a vote here, we're voting on, the motion being made to which one we're voting on. The one that's presented from the Economic Industrial Authority Board, make that as part of the motion, right, Robert?
And that is the one that is the subject of the motion, is the version that the Kentucky Capital Development Corporation provided is the one that's the subject of the motion pending, because there is a motion.
Yes.
And I believe Commissioner Wilder made the motion.
Did we hit the second? Did we have the second? Okay, are we ready to vote?
Commissioner Wilder?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
No.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Mayor Graham?
Yes, so it's Resolution 6.2 is approved. Okay, next, we're down to the consent calendar. Mr. Turner?
Yes, Mayor. Item 7.1, to authorize purchase order with Benson Valley Landfill for the disposal of debris removed from the cleaning of ditch number one at the wastewater treatment plant in the sewer department. $60,000 was included in the current fiscal year budget for cleaning of the ditches, and as of August 1st, this account had over $17 million remaining. Item 7.2, to authorize a bid award to Weston Incorporated to purchase new dry pits, admissible pump for Capitol Avenue Pump Station for the sewer department. The present pump is over 30 years old. The quoted price for the new pump is $57,402. Item 7.3, to authorize the filing of an application for 2011 DHS FEMA assistance to firefighters' grant funds for the fire department, and authorize the mayor to sign all grant-related documents. This would require a 10% match from the city of Frankfurt. It is anticipated that the grant request will be up to $180,000. Therefore, up to $18,000 will be required if the grant is awarded. Item 7.4, authorizing to award a contract to B&amp;F Distributors Incorporated to purchase a new Aurora Sludge Return Pump for the sewer department. To rebuild the present pump would cost estimated $25,000. We have a quote for a new pump for $31,731 for not to exceed purchase orders $33,000. A new pump will come with factory warranty and should provide 20-plus years of dependable service. Item 7.5, to authorize the filing of an application for 2011 DHS FEMA assistance to firefighters' grant funds for the fire department, and authorize the mayor to sign all grant-related documents. This includes a funding request for two ambulances. It is anticipated that the grant request will be up to $350,000. Therefore, up to $35,000 will be required if the grant is awarded. Item 7.6, personnel actions. Retirement, Mark Henson from the Fire EMS. Appointment, Nathan Hammond to the Police Department. Appointment, Brittany Goldsmith, the Police Department, 911. Appointment, Christopher Ford, Police, 911. Promotion, Thomas Gaines in the Sewer Department, from Maintenance Tech 3 to Maintenance Tech 4. Appointment, Dee Josh Ballard, the Police Department, Patrol Officer 1. It is to be noted that permission is given to the Fire Chief to make eight conditional offers of employment for position of firefighter EMT recruits. The recruit testing and civil service board interview process has been completed, and an eligibility list is being certified. Chief Posses has agreed that he will hire six firefighters at this time, and will wait until future retirements to hire two more.
Okay, do we have a motion pertaining to the consent calendar? So moved, Mayor. Commissioner Turner, do you have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Hayden, call the roll.
Commissioner Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Hayden?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. May?
Yes, and thank Mr. Henson for his service, and congratulations to you, Heather. Yes.
Mayor Graham?
Yes, so consent calendar is approved. Next on the agenda are board appointments. And I have two nominations for appointments to the Frankfurt Water and Electric Plant Board. I have a nomination for the appointment of Arthur L. McKee Jr. to a four-year term ending 9/23/15. Appointment of Patricia V. Lynch to a four-year term ending 9/23/15. You have letters of recommendation in your file, and also, you have the resumes of Mr. McKee and Mrs. Lynch. Do I have in motion action on this? If not, I will move for the approval of these nominations. Do I have a second?
Second.
You have a second and a discussion. Commissioner Wilder?
I'd just like to request, there's no urgency on these appointments. We've got another month to make them. And I'd just like to request that we delay this vote until we've all had a chance to, or at least had time to contact them and to talk with them a bit. This is just my opinion, I guess, but my sense is that the two most important things, the two biggest votes the commission takes are approving our annual budget and appointing faults to the plant board. They have a budget that's larger than city government, county government, and the sewer department combined, and they make decisions that affect more lives than we do, because our services extend far past our boundaries. And I just, we just got these names right before the weekend, and I haven't had much time to try to contact them. I tried to contact Mr. McKee and haven't been able to reach him yet, and we don't actually have a working phone number for Ms. Lynch. The number here is invalid. So, I'd just like to, I don't have anything against any of these appointments, and I just judging by their resumes, I expect I'll be happy to vote to appoint them, but it's just such, these decisions have such gravity and are so important. It'd be like casting a vote for an elected official without actually knowing who I'm voting for yet. I guess I'd just like to respectfully delay the vote.
The reason I'm headed for tonight is because they have another meet, their last meeting for the people they'll be replacing, I believe will be on September 21st. And we do not have, it'll be prior to our next business meeting, our next voting session. And I thought, in consideration of the two, that they've served well and the going, that will be, term to be ending, that it would be well if they'd just been on tonight, and then that they would have a chance to, the board and water plant board could acknowledge them in some way at that last meeting. I did recognize that, I believe that phone number was for Mrs. Lynch. I believe it's supposed to be 0513 rather than 01. I believe that's correct. It's 0513 instead of 0153. And, but it's term to check them out. You know, you've got the resumes, and you've got the small town, and you can talk with people. I find in these appointments that I feel very comfortable with the nominations of these people. And you see, they both have had state government experience in responsible positions, and they've worked where there's large budgets. Mr. McKee is in Transportation Cabinet, and has been a responsible opening of contracts and things into millions of dollars and oversight over those, and had been active in our community. Got the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet Office of Military Affairs, the Senior Service Award, YMCA Community Service Award, Leadership Frankfurt. And Ms. Lynch had spent 18 years as manager of facilities at Branch and Medicaid Services, managed a budget of over $1 billion annually, conducted public relations activities, building rules, and served on several years on statewide committees. She's president of an auxiliary of the Kentucky Chapter of Kentucky Society of Professional Engineers. So, I understand, you know, raising some issues, but I think we have good quality candidates, and I would prefer that we go ahead and approve them tonight. Commissioner Turner?
Thanks, Mayor. I'll make my comments as brief as possible, but certainly, I don't oppose any commissioner if they feel like we've got the time to do it. If they feel like they want to get more information on the candidates, then I certainly support that. That being said, I do support your nominations for the plant board. I don't know Mr. McKee personally, but have met and spoken with Ms. Lynch on several occasions in the past, and very nice woman. But I want to just take a moment to recognize the service of two members of the plant board that have served for a great deal of time and really ran the plant board during a tumultuous period, but I think that they have laid the groundwork and foundation for significant growth there. The plant board is an asset to the city. It is the People's Electric and Water Plant Board, and Chairwoman Wingrove and Board Member Maffett have done just an outstanding job trying to make that a better place, a more transparent operation, and they've really laid the groundwork for significant growth in the future. And I think we all owe them a great deal of thanks for their service on the plant board.
And I have contacted each of them personally and thanked them likewise, and so, and we'll be sending a letter of thanks likewise. Okay? Call the roll, please. May come at me?
Make one more comment. Sure. I think we do have, for what it's worth, I think we do have plenty of time to, even if we don't vote on these tonight, we have plenty of time to vote on these appointments before the 21st, before the meeting.
Okay. All right, call the roll.
Mr. Wilder?
Pass.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Mr. May?
Yes, and I too want to thank, in explaining my yes vote, express support, and thanks to Ms. Wingrove and Mr. Maffett for their years of service on the plant board. They have done a great job, and I'm sure that Mr. McKee and Ms. Lynch will also do a great job.
Yes, they did. They served well for two four-year terms, eight years on there, and so certainly had a lot to do with the direction. Okay, so.
And Mayor Graham?
Yes, so they are approved. Next is old business. Mr. Wilder?
Thank you, Mayor. We had quite a discussion of some of the details of the trash program, and we want to have a follow-up report tonight from Mr. Hackbart and Mr. Bradley. They've researched some parts of this and want to follow up with the report.
Tom and Bradley worked today putting together a form of what it might look like when we send out to the residents an order form for a trash can size and the recycling container size, and we just kind of wanted to present to you all the format, what it might look like, and get your feedback before we send it out. We have on here, we need a response by October 1st to try to get the order in, so we just wanted to present this to you all tonight. Also, on the last page of the handout, it kind of looks at that five-year projection with the prices we talked about a Monday ago, and what the revenue projections would look like in year one, year three, and year five.
Commissioner Wilder?
Thank you for putting this together. I assume that the budget decreases over time, well, the budget and the deficit decrease over time. Is that because we presume that more people are recycling and throwing away less? Is that?
The, I'll let, if you remember last week, we looked at the budget decreasing over time based on just lowering our costs through.
That's just the automation.
Less labor. We didn't change the assumptions that we made last time as far as the distribution of which, or how many people would take each one of the three various choices. We just kept that assumption throughout.
Fair enough. I guess I would just caution staff in the commission to recognize that if the program works the way it's intended to, that the revenue generated will actually decrease.
Yes.
Over time as well.
I think, you know, the comments.
And that last sheet wouldn't go out with the question.
I guess I've got one other comment and question. The intention has always been to do this in a revenue-neutral sense, and a sense we have with one exception. The $200,000 a year in extra expense in terms of leasing out the cost of the cans and everything, is that going to, I realize that this budget and revenue and deficit, I'll just refer specifically very solely to the garbage program, and that's not in reference to the city's larger budget.
Yes.
But my question is, is that $200,000 going to throw our larger budget out of whack? Do we need to be accounting for that, or is that going to fit into the larger budget? I mean, I'm afraid I know the answer, but.
No, I don't think that that was budgeted.
Right.
Before.
So, in terms of our, so this is almost revenue-neutral except for that $200,000. This is just going to add a $200,000 deficit to our actual budget. Once you readjust it, you accordingly.
Well, to rephrase, the garbage cans and the recycling carts are not in this current year's budget.
Right.
So, we've had a discussion a couple weeks ago about possibly doing a budget amendment to give us the green light to order based on this survey. So, I guess some of the costs that are in this are not in the current budget. So, some of these items would create, would require a budget amendment.
And if this were just, I mean, if we thought that we could absorb that, because that 200 is going to recur for five years, right?
That's correct.
And if we thought we could absorb that into future balanced budgets, then I'd be comfortable going ahead and making an amendment this year for it, if that's what it takes to get us started on something that'll produce long-term cost savings. to get us started on something that'll produce long-term cost savings. And from the budget projections here, that clearly can be absorbed in time, because we see an estimated drop in $3 million.
I don't know that you can assume that that cart cost goes away after the fifth year.
Well, that's fair. That's fair. I think we've been, other cities suggest that you look at a 10% to 15%.
I don't understand.
So we have two, we have, the cost of the carts, if we're going to provide everybody with carts, the estimated cost is, well, the estimated cost is $1 million.
Yeah, only $20,000 a year for five years.
Spread out, leased out over $200,000 a year for five years. But they're, what Jeff and Tom are telling us, and this is, I think they're absolutely right, is that we can't assume that that cost goes away after five years, because after five years, we can expect to have to replace some number of cans.
Yeah.
And I think the numbers we've heard are around the lines of 10%, 15% annually. I don't know.
Just for my own clarification, when you say a statement like revenue-neutral, you mean have the same revenue bringing in as the $5 garbage fee we call, bringing in $600,000? And this here shows that the revenue generated for each of these first, third, and fifth year is going to be roughly $600,000. And still, we're going to have a deficit, you know, of the first year, 1.47 estimated, 1.3, and then fifth year, 1.1. Then it seems like we, am I correct now? We're just swapping the $5 for everybody, garbage fee that we've had, to this program in which some people pay nothing and some will pay four, and some will pay $12 a month, and still generate basically the same amount of money, plus we've got to buy the trash cans, the million dollars for trash cans, and then I guess billing them? How are we going to bill the people? I mean, are they going to be billed monthly, quarterly, six months?
There's various options for that. You have the property tax, like we have used in previous years. There's also talking with the plant board, maybe the opportunity through the plant board bill. Then third, there's an option where the city could create its own monthly bill, and we've looked at that option as well, but we haven't got our final numbers on that option. So there's three potential options for billing.
Okay.
And all of this considers a billing charge component in the budget, so we put a number in there, just making an assumption.
When this, when this whole discussion, sorry, I thought we were going to, like, pay as you throw. It was, I thought it was going to be that everybody's going to pay something, and then it's all going to come out to cover the, for instance, the first year budget for garbage collection this year, next year it's going to be $2 million, 2.1, so it would generate 2.1 rather than 637,000. And in the third year, estimated, it's going to collect the garbage, will be 1.9, and will still be collecting 637,000. And third year, the cost is going to be 1.8, and still going to be collecting roughly 637,000. So the whole concept, then, of pay as you throw, is not paying for all of it, and we're still back where we, we're pretty much where we were when we started. Is that not right, in terms of money?
I can respond to that, Mayor. I think that the concept of pay as you throw is to incentivize producing less waste, and what this proposal does, if you recall from the conversations that we had, to all of you all who are not familiar with this conversation, we've been discussing for the last year, and this public at large has been talking longer than that, even during the election, about their unhappiness with the current trash fee system that gives a blanket $5 charge to every person, for every property owner, excuse me, for trash service in this community. It was a big shock. People came from zero to $5. What we wanted to do, and what we've been discussing up to this point, is to find a trash system that, number one, incentivizes producing less waste, one that can cut the long-term costs of solid waste for our city, which this plan does as projected, and number three, attempt to at some point get to a point where it can pay for its, you know, that this waste system can pay for itself. Through those discussions, we found that a lot of the solid waste, even with your $5 garbage fee as it is now, is supplemented through your property, your occupational, and your insurance premium taxes. We had discussed a possibility of changing those tax systems so that we could give property owners, we could take the amount that we take from the general fund or the property taxes, cut those property taxes by that amount, and then create a pay-as-you-throw system that would pay for itself, but much to staff, and Steve argued very eloquently that if you cut down the property tax, it could damage you in the long run. So then our conversation moved to, well, if we're not going to cut the property tax, can we somehow credit the tax so that people do not see an increase in what they're paying now overall for taxes? The great thing about this plan right here is that it's actually going to cut your trash fee. The vast majority of people, probably, I'm not with projections, would be either getting the 35-gallon can or the 65-gallon can. If you were to get the 35-gallon can under this plan, your trash pickup is free. It is paid for by what we charge in the general fund. If you get the 65-gallon can, your trash pickup will be $4. That's $1 less a month than what you're paying as it is now. If you so choose to produce more waste, and that's what we need to cut down, because our tipping fees go up based on the tons that we pay, this plan provides you the opportunity to get the 95-gallon cart, which you would then pay $12 a month for that cart. So the idea is that if you can incentivize throwing away less, and we're giving away free recycling cans to do that, that it's just taking that waste out of the landfill and putting it into the recycling system. And so one of the good things is this gives us the opportunity to begin automating our trash pickup service to an extent which cuts long-term costs even more. As it is now, we have three people on a truck. Is that right, Jeff?
That's correct.
If you can do this where we get these cans, which that's the $200,000 charge a month that Commissioner Wilder's talking about, if you get these cans, you can take away one of those people on the truck. Now, one might ask, well, does that mean we're going to cut jobs in this community? Those people are inmates that are working on the back of the trucks, so the employment reduction there would be just in inmates. So this is a win-win situation for the people in this community. You know, a lot of people complained that, you know, several years ago, they gave me a $5 fee and I didn't get anything for it. You're going to get a trash can, a recycling van, and you may even be able to get free trash pickup if you can keep it in 35 gallons, and a 65-gallon recycling van. This pay-as-you-throw system, it's the only system known in the country to be able to cut long-term costs of this, and that, I wanted to say that because I wanted to be very clear what this commission's been talking about up to this point, and I wanted to be very clear that we've explored those options with, when it comes to, you know, should we lower the tax rate so that it's not an increased burden on the people of this community? We felt that that probably wouldn't be in the best long-term interests of the city, and so what we decided to do is we'll just credit a certain amount to the solid waste department from the general fund that would equal, you know, what that increase in rate would be. And so the fact of the matter is, is that that's how we came to. It would be $0 for the 35-gallon container, or it would be $4 for the 65-gallon container, because we're crediting some of those funds from the general fund over to the solid waste. Thank you, Mayor.
The containers, I mean, just as a comment, the containers, we've got a pilot project going out Crestwood.
Yes, Mayor.
And we're probably going to provide the containers anyway, because if it was successful. So it really not, it's going to be taken most likely, I think, if it's successful, it's been hit, is it not?
We did a neighborhood survey, and the survey came back 86% in favor of the cart program, so yes, the neighborhood.
So that would be like a wash. I mean, the containers, whether under this new procedure or if we had it before, if we could be buying containers anyway for everybody and providing for them free, correct?
We would have to do a budget amendment either way.
Certainly, yeah, I mean, but it's the same thing, as I said. The, back before the garbage fee or the garbage tax, whatever people would call it, the $500, the $5 a month was put into effect, everyone, all citizens, were given tax breaks, any kind of breaks. They didn't have to pay anything, because it's taken from the general fund. I mean, I'm just being facetious a little bit here, but the, so anyway, I just wanted, I just saw these numbers here, and that's why I was just trying to say, this seems like a wash, and we're going through a, Commissioner May?
Mayor, I just wanted to, I think, you're not, this is a question and then some comments. This is just a draft of a form that would be distributed when the, if the commission actually were to vote, the move ahead with this program, you're not going to send it out until after we take a vote, because it says, starting in 2012, the city is converting the current sanitation program into a pay-as-you-throw program, which we haven't voted on yet.
We can't order the carts until we get what the order would be, but we can't really even place an order until a budget, I would assume a budget amendment is approved by you all, putting the funds in our budget to purchase the carts. So I think that's kind of the trigger, is we need to consider a budget amendment before we do a cart purchase. So we would never put this out on the street until we had clear approval from the board to move forward.
Mayor, I just, if I may continue, I just wanted to say, too, that one of the concerns that I've had, and I appreciate everyone's work on this program, commissioners who have advocated for this program, staff who've worked on it, anyone's taken place in the community meetings, I still have concerns about not knowing the real financial impact on this. I understand, too, that the 35-gallon carts, while they would be provided at no cost, and that the 65-gallon carts, which would be $4 a container, and then the 95-gallon containers, which we had in Crestwood, those would go to $12. I can't imagine my household generating enough to fill up a 95-gallon cart unless some extreme circumstances, but I guess the thing that concerns me is the, having, right now, the city picks up pretty much anything that people put out on the curbside, and if we did the rollout containers in the 95-gallon cart, which we did, the pilot program in Crestwood, the city still picks up large items if people call. So for example, somebody wants to put out a refrigerator, or washer, or dryer, or some furniture, they just call City Hall and the city picks that up, and if they don't call, the trucks, when they're in the neighborhood, will radio to the other vehicle that picks up the white goods or the furniture. So I guess one of the concerns that I have, and I don't know how many people it impacts, but young families that have children who have diapers would certainly not be able to get everything in a 35-gallon cart, so they would have the option, I guess, of going up to a 65-gallon cart. And even, I don't even know if 65-gallon cart would hold all the, a young household would have in it, and then having to pay under this proposal, which is just a proposal hadn't been voted on. If things, if a family doesn't have enough space in 35-gallon can or the 65-gallon can, and I guess even the 95-gallon can, their option would be to purchase a bag from the city of Frankfurt, however those are going to be distributed, and that would be an extra $3. So that, you know, it's $3 per bag. I don't know how many times that would happen, how many times it wouldn't happen, but I guess those are just, I'm just expressing concerns with folks, is why I have real worries about this type of program, and certainly want to encourage recycling, and we've, over the years, had recycling promoters on staff. I was one of the three original votes to start the recycling program in Frankfurt and still believe in that program strongly. But I guess where Frankfurt's different than a lot of the communities that do have the pay-as-you-throw program, which I'm not saying is a bad program, I just don't know that it's right for Frankfurt right now, is that those other communities have a much higher tipping fee, because our Frankfurt tipping fee is so much lower compared to other communities, that the cost-benefit ratio doesn't, the percentage of, the cost-benefit ratio certainly isn't going to equal that of a community where there's a higher tipping fee and where they require recycling or they get fined. So I think, for me, I'm concerned about young families with small children and those times when I know there's no way they can get in a 35-gallon cart, having raised children. No matter how much we recycle, we'd still have, would have had more than would go in a 35-gallon cart. And just having, the billing situation hasn't been addressed, because I, last I got from the city manager, and I certainly don't want to put words in anybody's mouth, was that I don't think the plant board was ready to enter into doing billing as of our last meeting. Am I right on that? I don't want to misquote.
That's correct.
And, but again, I would be more comfortable with the rollout carts, which we started looking at about six years ago, when we started buying the trucks, to go to a rollout automated pickup in the, I guess, the 95-gallon container, and keeping everything as it is except going to that at this point. I'm not saying that I can't be convinced in the future, I'm just saying right now, I don't see enough on paper or talked about that, that makes me feel compelled enough to feel comfortable to switch over at this point.
Commissioner Turner.
Commissioner May, you mentioned a very good point in that the tipping fees, the city of Frankfurt has very low tipping fees, and particularly Kentucky in general has lower tipping fees than the rest of the country. That being said, that's one of the reasons why we are able to provide this program in such a cost-effective manner. That's why you would be able to have a 35-gallon can free of charge, or a 65 gallons of waste handled per week under $5, less than what you're paying now. If we are able to attack the amount of waste that we're putting out right now, as tipping fees rise, just like energy costs are rising, this will put the city of Frankfurt in a better position down the road, and we can incur those price increases much better than what we could if we just kept it the same. And I'm sorry, the same means we have a trash fee that does not reward anybody for cutting down the amount of waste, it does not incentivize recycling, it does none of those things. This plan right here puts us in better position in the long term. It will cut our costs as projected, and I think that it would set a nice message to the state that we're preparing ourselves for when those tipping fees prices rise, because we don't want it to hit us as hard as what it would if we didn't. Thanks.
I think what we, in this discussion here, I believe what you're requesting or wanting to hear from us is that if the commission will give approval for a budget amendment so that you can go about making inventory for the containers and that type, that's what you're after, correct? Is there, is the commission favorable to, so we had to have two readings, right? We had to have two readings for that. So what they need now is if the commission is in favor of letting them progress, proceed with this, the plan that they're on, and then we'd have to have two readings for them. So if, okay, the commission, we just go ahead and prepare that, then Mr. Moore, okay?
Mayor, I'd just like to be on record, just saying, at this point, I'm opposed to that, and just.
Pardon me?
I just want to say, just for the record, I just want to be on record, just saying I'm opposed to that at this point.
Yes, yes, I get you. Commissioner Wilder?
And to clarify, for everybody's understanding, a budget amendment to purchase the cans...
And to clarify, for everybody's understanding, a budget amendment to purchase the cans, that's not necessarily relevant to pay as you throw, as in that's, the cans would be necessary for the pay-throw system that we've discussed, but obviously, the possibility of providing rollout cans, as per the Crestwood rollout, has also been on the table for a while. So we're essentially going ahead and authorizing the preparation of a budget amendment to allow for the purchase and distribution of those cans. Having said that, if the city does adopt a pay-as-you-throw system, then essentially this cart request form and the information on it would need to be, I guess you would actually want to start getting this information in before you order the cans, so you know how many to order if we're going with the pay-as-you-throw system. So that means that it would be, it would be incumbent on us to make some final decisions regarding a pay-as-you-throw system, by when?
Most likely, most likely by the second reading. And one other, on the budget amendment, in the budget we proposed last Monday, had some extra personnel in for code enforcement, and some extra for buying an automated garbage truck, which is not currently in our current budget. Yeah. So I guess to really fully look at the budget, then, it would be including all costs related to the proposal last Monday, in terms of the total cost to go as the pay-as-you-throw program.
Can you give us an idea of what that number is? It sounds larger than 200.
It was in the spreadsheet, and we can get that. This one does not have it. We'll provide that information supplement.
And so, so we should be prepared to make a final decision, one way or the other, by, by our voting meeting in September, or by? Is that accurate? Are you looking for it before then?
It really depends on when you want to start the program.
In October.
Because...
It'd be the voting...
The time that we could finalize this would be the voting meeting in October.
Of course, we could make, you could make decisions before then, but officially, it would not be, couldn't pull the trigger on it until that...
We could pass the budget amendment in September.
Right.
Yeah, we could pass the budget amendment in September. Right?
Two readings.
Two readings. Two readings. So be October.
Maybe that's, we do that all the time, yeah. I mean, we can either, I mean, we either call the special, right, we either call the special meetings and hold the, and hold the first reading prior to a work session, which we've done numerous times, or we rescind that order that prohibits us from hearing readings during work sessions. Because I'm, I mean, I personally, I could go ahead and pull the trigger on this, but for one or two minor things that we have, we have time to work out. But I think the, if we do do this, if we do pull the trigger on pay-as-you-throw, we've discussed that in the context of trying to have that in place by January 1st.
It's dependent on the carts.
Yeah.
We have to have time to get them in.
Sure.
And distribute.
Sure. And we expect the turnaround after ordering to be...
Probably about three months.
Yeah.
So it might be a little after, depending on how the surveys, you have to give time for the surveys to come back.
Of course. Well, it seems that if we can, it seems that if we could get the carts ordered by October 1st, if we can get the budget amendment passed in September, and that warrants a full month's worth of discussion, we're not cutting anything, cutting anything short. We can get the budget amendment passed in September, then that gives, then the carts can go ahead and be ordered then. How much, how much time, how much time do you think needs to be allotted, would need to be allotted for the surveys?
We had planned to send these out first September and give a month.
Yeah.
There's language in here that if they don't return it in time, they get the default size, which is what we discussed at the last meeting.
Sure.
And if you all look at those sizes or anything on here that you, as the commissioner, want to change, just let us know.
Would it be prudent of us to, I know that we have a number of members of the FYFL who are here to speak to us today, and they've been waiting very patiently for two hours to get their opportunity to speak, and we have devoted quite a bit of work session time to this subject. I would request, by my fellow members of the board, if we could address this issue in all of this, at the work session, the first work session of September, that way we can, at that point, give some guidance on, I mean, I'm fine with this, but in terms of authorizing the, right now, I think that that discussion would be best for the work session, so that we can speed this meeting up. I mean, it's seven o'clock right now, and I know that these, they've got families and children to put in bed for school tomorrow, and I want to give them the opportunity to do that.
Sure. Can we perhaps maybe pick this up a little bit more at the end of the meeting, if we have time?
Yeah.
I'm happy to set this aside for now. Thanks for waiting so patiently, too.
Continue.
Mr. Hackbar, excuse me, can you also have an update on the roof project, just a very quick, very quick report?
Yes, August 26th, the structural report for our city hall, looking at the possibility of putting a green roof on city hall, will be in my office, so I just wanted to give you all a quick update. They're working, they've been to city hall, and we should expect a report back the 26th of August.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, also, I have one very short announcement. The Humane Society board member will be appointed, will be Darian Rambo. And I expect, I've talked with Judge Collins, and I expect by the end of the week, the county will have appointed, made their appointment. So both governments will have made their appointments by the end of this week.